Good evening and welcome to the March 9, 2015 meeting of the Revere City Council. Will everyone please rise and salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Councillor Arigo.
Here.
Here, Councillor Janino is absent. Councillor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councillor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councillor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councillor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Councillor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councillor Ridden.
Here.
Here, Councillor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Powers.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the meeting held on February 23, 2015.
Motion approved.
Calendar item number one, resolution of condolence for City Councillor Richard A. Penta will be presented by the Revere City Council.
This is a resolution of condolence, where his former City Councillor Richard A. Penta has rendered conspicuous, faithful, and honorable public service to the citizens of the city of Revere in his duties as a City Councillor, and where his almighty God, in his infinite wisdom, has called City Councillor Richard A. Penta to his eternal rest, and where his sad calling from amidst of City Councillor Richard A. Penta leaves a vacancy in the official family of the city of Revere that will be difficult to fill and in memory that will be long cherished. Now therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Revere City Council extend to the family of City Councillor Richard Penta on behalf of the citizens of Revere our heartfelt sympathy and sincere regrets on this profound loss, and be it further resolved that in recognition of former City Councillor Penta's service to the citizens of the city of Revere, that the City Council pay sincere tribute to his memory by spreading upon the official records of the Revere City Council a copy of this resolution of condolence. Audit by the City Council on a roll call, Councillors Arigo, Guanasso, Janino, Haas, Morabito, Novoselsky, Patch, Ridden, Zambudo, and City Council President Powers voting in the affirmative. Approved by City Councillor President John Powers and witness thereof, this resolution of condolence is given at the Revere City Hall this 9th day of March in the year of our Lord 2015 of the Independence of the United States of America 227th, signed by Ashley Melnick, City Clerk. I just have a comment to make, and I know the mayor does also. For 15 years, I had the pleasure of serving with Councillor Penta. Sometimes we would share a light moment together, and that infectious smile would appear on his face. To me, Richard was not only a colleague but also a friend. We could disagree on an issue, and after the meeting, go for dinner or a cup of coffee. If Richard gave you his word on an issue, it didn't change coming up those stairs outside. He kept it when he voted as a City Councillor. I think on most days, you would find Richard having coffee at Toretta's Bakery, listening to the concerns of his constituents, and chatting with friends. Councillor Penta left an indelible mark on Ward 1 and the city of Revere, always advocating for street sidewalk improvements, parks, playgrounds, and other improvements, always making sure that Ward 1 got its fair share. Whoever becomes the next Ward 1 City Councillor will have big shoes to fill. Thank you. Everyone stand in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Are there any other City Councilors? Councillor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, we're in loss for a good friend, colleague, and I offer my love and support and sympathy for his wonderful family, his wife, his sons, his daughter, his mother, and his brother, and his family. It's certainly a big loss for the community, but it's a major loss for the Penta family. Richard Penta was not only a good Ward Councillor, a good public servant, but he was a better family man. I can recall and hear some of the great words that he was offering out about his children, and how proud he was to indicate their achievements and what they do in life and certain things that they're participating in. The basis of a good person is how he conducts himself with his family, and I think family people give a great foundation for any offer of life that you proceed to do, certainly in the public life where you have to take adversaries and put them in perspective, and you also take the good things that happen to you in public life. But certainly, Richard will be remembered for the wonderful things he has done for his ward and his family, and certainly on a personal note, I will miss the $10 every Monday night that I got from him when he selected the football team who was going to win. I think in one season, he was 0-for-11, so it's a financial loss for me, but it certainly was the great camaraderie that we shared and the fun that we shared in taking part in that kind of activities. He will be long remembered and long thought of, and certainly Ward 1 is in loss for a great public servant. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councillor Guanasso. Councillor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm almost, you know, it's almost never that I'm speechless up here, that I obviously didn't prepare any remarks for my dear friend, Richard Penta. Richard and I had a bond that not a lot of people knew about, because I didn't socialize with Richard. I didn't partake in his family events, and, but I loved this man. He cared about this city. He cared about his ward. He was a wonderful family man, and I think President Powers said it, if Richard gave you his word, it was his bond. And him and I had that in common, that we would die before we would break our word. He loved Beechmont. He loved the city of Revere. He bled the city of Revere from high school to his passing. The city lost a wonderful public servant. I know his family lost a wonderful father. He loved his family tremendously. I'm going to miss him dearly, and all we can do now is pray for him. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Zambudo. Councillor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've known Richard socially going back to the '70s. He's been a good friend, and I've had the good fortune of getting to know him real well recently, and like my fellow colleagues said, he loved his family dearly, deeply, and he loved Beechmont, and he loved this city. I got real close with him the last few years on this council. We liked to kid about having each other's back, and I think we did. I got to know him real good, because, as you know, he had trouble with his eyes. I got to drive him around and socialize with him a lot, and I'm going to miss his friendship. And my colleagues are right, when he gave his word, he meant it. And me and my colleagues up here are going to miss him deeply. On that, I'll just say, God bless. Thanks.
Thank you, Councillor Patch. Councillor Ridden?
Thank you, Mr. President. I echo the statement sentiments of my brother, Councillors Zambudo, Guanasso, and Patch. I grieve Richie's loss more as a friend, first as a friend, and second as his fellow City Councillor. We didn't always agree on matters political, as is the case with all well-meaning conscientious and compassionate public servants, and Richie was all of that, all of that. He served up here with my brother, as well as myself. I go back in friendship to him when he was serving with my brother up here. We spent many social hours together right through that time, and including the present. Beechmont has lost a favorite son. All of Ward 1, for that matter, has lost its favorite son. I lived in Ward 1, owned a home in Ward 1 when Richie was the councillor there, and I know that he served all his constituents regardless of where they were in the ward as well as he possibly could, and that was exemplary as far as the Ward Councillors who serve in the city. And people will always look up to the way Richie served his constituents whenever they think of good representation in this city. He's an example. He was an example. He was an example to me, and I will miss him terribly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Ridden. Councillor Morabito?
Thank you, Mr. President. Although I've been on the council less than two years, and he's been a colleague of mine for that timeframe, I've known Richie Penta and his family for over five years, and I know the great family they are, and I want to first send my condolences to them. I can't even imagine what they're going through right now. You know, Richie was a stand-up guy. He was revered to the core. I feel he lived, breathed Revere, and when he brought his issues to the City Council, he never cared about what anyone thought, because he knew the end result was only in the best interest of his citizens. Just want to share a moment that I had with Richie. He told me that whatever you do as a City Councillor, you've got to compromise every now and then to get what you want. Things just don't work easily. That's the game of political football. But one thing you can never compromise is who you are, and you have to be true to yourself. And as long as you do that, you won't feel yourself, and you won't feel the people who supported you. And that's something that stuck in my mind. He was just always there to listen, and at the end of the day, when we're here, it's like we all are passionate. We're all on the City Council because we believe in something, and we're passionate. And the viewers watch, and they see us go head-to-head sometimes, and tempers flare. But at the end of the day, we all have the, we're all passionate about the city and the people of Revere, and he's really going to be missed. He's a gentleman, and he was passionate about what he did. He was always willing to help the people of Ward 2, and he's going to be missed as
Thank you, Councillor Morabito. Any other councillors? Councillor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. To Richie's wife, Cynthia, their family, boys, girls, the mother, you know, it's a great loss that we have. My political career spans many years with Richie. As the mayor of the city, he was a councillor. As a councillor, I'm a councillor. We had many battles out there, but one thing they can say, Richard always stood up, as the previous speakers have indicated. He always maintained his commitment. His commitment was his bond, and I think we all know that. And again, I guess one of his major accomplishments was the Rogan Federal Protection Program, which him and I worked on hand-in-hand. I think that was a major accomplishment down there. We don't hear about it too much, because we don't have the extensive flooding that we had in the past, so Richard will be remembered. He was a stand-up guy. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Haas. Councillor Arigo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I don't have any prepared remarks, but I've known the Penta family since high school. I golfed with his son, Richard, and actually worked at Wonderland with Stephen, and I got to know how important he was to them and how important they were to him as I became City Councillor. You know, as it was alluded to, he was very proud of his kids, and it's really a big loss for Ward 1 and Beechmont especially, and I think his passing does put a lot of what happens up here in perspective. Richie and I, like any of us, have not always, always been on the same page on issues, but I always had respect for Richard, because he did, you knew where he was coming from, and he did keep his word, and even if there was disagreement about an issue, you could always leave the chamber and know that you'd get a smile from Richie, and he would always ask about my dad and check in on him, so he's going to be missed, and, you know, my heart goes out to the family. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Arigo. Mr. Mayor, I know, did you want to comment?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. You know, I've heard a lot of you up here talk about friendship, and that is how I will always remember Richard. You know, we sat together, Mr. President, you and I, and Councillor Zambudo, and Councillor Guanasso, and others, Councillor Haas, and, you know, a lot of you up here, Councillor Patch was here for many years, and we, you know, we talked about issues, and we did the very best we could to represent the people of Revere. But, you know, I think all of us recognize that while we're up here on Monday nights or at subcommittee meetings, talking about issues that impact the city, like any other work environment, you become friends, and it's those types of things. I don't think I'll remember Richard Penta for any one or two votes he took. I'll remember him for being the great guy that he was, the affable guy that he was, the family man that he was, how proud he was of his children, the relationship he had with Cindy and his family, his brothers, just a quality guy, and, you know, a guy that really had handle on the issues. Richie was nobody's fool. I mean, he knew what he was talking about when he came up here, and he did his homework. Councillor Haas talked about that revetment project down at Rogan's Point. I mean, how many of those homes have been saved down there because of the hard work that as the Ward Councillor, he did down there and pursued those federal funds so that you can drive down Broad Sound Ave now during a high tide, high wind event, and you won't see any flooding down there? He did his work, but as much as he did his work, he could enjoy himself too. He had a lot of fun with his family, going up to Damascada, Maine, and spending time at the family cottage up there. He would, you know, which, I mean, I'm almost envious of the relationship he had with his children. He hung around with them. They were friends, you know, and, you know, it's going to leave a big hole in Beechmont. It's going to leave a big hole in Ward 1. It's going to leave a big hole in the City Council. It's going to leave a big hole for all of us, so I know members of my administration, it's still almost borderline surreal when I walked into the council chambers and saw the floral arrangement in his picture there. You know, it just continues to hit you that you're not going to be having that, those conversations anymore with him, but he served this city like nobody that I've ever seen. He was a dedicated public servant. He was a dedicated friend, a dedicated father, husband, brother, uncle, and I know, I just share with all of you in the loss I know you're feeling up here as City Councilors. Believe me, we feel it throughout City Hall and throughout the rest of the city, so I share in all of our grief, and once again, offer my condolences to the family. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was very well said. I'm sure it's the sentiments of all of us here. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Councillor Janino cannot be here tonight, but she had emailed me a comment that she wanted to share regarding Councillor Penta. "A person that departs from this earth never truly leaves, for they are still alive in our hearts and minds; through us they live on. It was an honor to have served with Councillor Penta on this City Council, and I am truly saddened by the loss of my colleague. I offer my deepest condolences to his family, friends, and all of Ward 1, which he loved so much during this difficult time." Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number two, hearing called is ordered on an ordinance further amending Title 1, Chapter 1.12 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere in Accepting Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40U.
We'll hear the proponents first. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members of the City Council, you all have probably heard us talk about Chapter 40U in the past, and tonight, we're going to be asking you to adopt state law, Mass. General Law's Chapter 40U, and enact this ordinance to help our city combat dangerous and problem properties. As you all know, we have adopted a very, very strict stance against problem properties. We have established our Safe Housing Task Force that is having great success. You may have read about some recent successes we've had. The most recent one down on Washington Avenue, where we took a condemned piece of property and turned it into four beautiful units that are being sold right now. So these are the types of things that we want to do. We want to take blighted and illegal properties in many cases and turn them into credits to the neighborhood as opposed to the opposite. This has been a long process. We started this conversation about 40U probably two years ago, maybe two and a half years ago, but the reason it took us so long is because we wanted to get it right, and there was a lot of people that were instrumental in putting it together, not the least of which is our representation, not only by our own city solicitor, Paul Capizzi, but D'Ambrosio and Brown, Jerry D'Ambrosio, Peter Brown, Emily Grossman, who worked extremely hard in making sure that this ordinance was just the way we wanted it. Our finance department has been involved, Giorgio Anzoni, who wanted to make sure that the finance portion of this ordinance would streamline with the fining portion of it. And I won't get into all the intricacies of the ordinance. I'll leave that up to Peter Brown when he comes up to give you a PowerPoint of what, you know, what we're actually adopting, but safe to say that there was a lot of players involved. Nick Catnazzo from the Inspection Services Department, Benny DeChristophero, as I said, Giorgio Anzoni, our two chiefs who were very involved in this process, Chief Cafarelli and Chief Dougherty. That, you know, it's been a, it's been a real, true group effort to put this together, but I am confident that, you know, that doing it the right way is the best way. We didn't want to roll it out to the City Council for your approval and find out a year later that it wasn't what we were looking for, or what we wanted, or we could have done it better. This, we really spent time on. And as I say, it will allow us to attack problem properties. It will put inspectors in the field with ticketing devices. They will have handheld devices similar to what the parking clerk has, and, you know, it will make it, it will make it, you know, much more, it will make it a much more fluid process. There's not going to be tickets you have to reconcile when you get down there. It's all electronic. We'll have an organized and computerized system that we can monitor and track these tickets, along with an internal hearing process. That's another major component of this 40U. I don't know, is Bob Mara here? Is he here? Bob, there he is. Okay. Many of you know Bob Mara. Bob Mara has served our community in many different capacities, as a city solicitor, as a member of the licensing board. You know, he, you know, he's, I can't say enough about Bob Mara, who I know will do a great job as our hearings officer here for our 40U. And what, so by having a hearings officer, we don't have to, we don't have to have people challenge their fines, you know, that, you know, 95% of the time are, you know, well-deserved, and then have them sit at the bottom of a pile in Chelsea District Court. We'll be able to run our own hearings right here in the city, and so it will make it, it will make it a much quicker process, both for the person who's challenging any type of fine that might be implemented, and for the city. So we will have hearings twice a month. They will be held at the community center over at the police department, and, you know, again, it will be much better for the city and much better for the people who want to challenge these tickets. Other communities have adopted this, Chelsea, Everett, Malden, Winthrop, they have already adopted Chapter 40U, all with great success. The law was passed in 2010, so, you know, but again, I know this is 2015. We wanted to make sure that we had it right. So there will be a few people where this is a public hearing that would like to come up and speak on behalf of the ordinance, probably, I don't know if all, but those that have worked on this ordinance, so that they can give you their perspective of why we're doing it and how we're doing it. And by the way, I think another great byproduct of this is the fact that, you know, we get deluged by people that when they get a fine or a ticket, they're calling you, they're calling you, they're calling you. Everyone's getting phone calls, "I got a ticket. Can you call for me?" This is going to be similar to the way parking tickets are issued. There's an appeal process. There won't be, I mean, you know, right now, and I'm sure Nick could probably speak to this, I mean, he gets calls, you know, people get a ticket, and they just think, "Well, let me call my local councillor," and they're going to take care of it. Well, that's, you know, that's not why we have inspectional services. Ideally, in a perfect world, I don't want to issue one ticket, because that means people are doing everything right, but we all know that's not the case. You know, most people do do things right, but unfortunately, there's people that violate our city or ordinances, whether they're building code ordinances or health code ordinances, and that's how we want, you know, that's how we're going to make this a better community, by enforcing the ordinances that we have on the books. So this just gives us another tool. The legislature and their wisdom gave us these tools. As I say, a lot of other cities and towns have adopted it, and I think that we're going to be one step ahead because of the way we've streamlined it, particularly with respect to the finance portion. So at this time, I'd like to call up Peter Brown from D'Ambrosio and Brown for him to describe the program to you just a little bit more.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Brown, please step up and state your name and address, please.
Thank you, Councillor. Attorney Peter Brown, D'Ambrosio Brown, address 14 Proctor Avenue in Revere.
Thank you.
The mayor summarized the program pretty nicely. I'm going to give you a brief overview of how the program will work. One of the directives by the mayor was not just to propose a new ordinance and have it adopted and get out in the field and have problems, but actually look at how all of the departments were going about doing the code enforcement work. And so we're really pleased to report to you that what we're asking is not just the adoption of a new ordinance, but really a new way that the city is going to go about doing its code enforcement business, which is going to do a few things. In terms of being functional, number one, it's going to modernize the process, and you'll hear about the ticketing devices and utilizing technology that wasn't being utilized before. We also examined a number of different inefficiencies that were going on within the city, not because of anything the city was doing wrong, but because the law that the state legislature had forced the city to utilize had become outdated in this day and age, and so we've been able to go and deal with those. The fairness of this particular process needs to be emphasized, and it was something that really went into the planning of this particular ordinance. There were a number of different letters and procedures and notices. There were a number of different letters and procedures and notices that will go into this and we'll get into it in detail, but I can tell you that I've consulted with numerous municipalities on this particular statute and the code enforcement process, and I could tell you that I believe the City of Revere will have an exceptional hearing process that will then be, even after it's all over, subject to judicial review at Chelsea District Court if somebody wasn't happy, if an owner wasn't happy, or if the city wasn't happy. And the third part, and what the mayor said would make the Revere's process different than others, is that your Director of Finance insisted that we have a financially integrated system. And what that means is that once the code tickets were leaving Inspection Services, there was an incredibly manual and difficult and layered process from the time the tickets were issued from ISD and made their way over to Finance, because that's where all your leverage is, is that when a ticket doesn't get paid, it needs to get onto the tax bill so that either you're going to get the money so the fine is paid, but more importantly, it's going to change behavior. An owner, when they have to pay an increased tax bill, or a bank has to cover that cost, is then going to then address the issue and make sure it doesn't happen again. And so what Mr. Anzoni insisted is that we had an integrated process with technology that took us from Inspection Services over to the Finance Office. So this is an example of the type of equipment that some of the inspectors will have out in the field. They'll be equipped with automated ticketing devices, so when they go and they see a particular problem or violation, they'll be able to go and punch in the code or the ordinance that they feel is being violated. It's going to take a photograph with a date and timestamp of what is happening, and that will be what ends up getting challenged if it does later on in the process. The device will have the ability to take the photograph right then and there. It will then print the ticket out in the field, and the inspector will take the ticket and, as the state law requires, will put the ticket or affix it right to the door, or some sort of insert with the structure. So somebody will know right then and there that they got the ticket, they'll know what it's for, and they'll see the reason that they got it. They won't have to go and pull the City of Revere ordinances or the State Sanitary Code and say, "What does 100.23.46 mean?" They'll know they're being fined for a particular reason, and they'll know what the problem is. The ticket challenges will be heard internally and independently, and this is huge. This is, right now, people have legitimate grievances with tickets that were issued, and they absolutely have the right to be heard, and they need to be heard. And due to the burden over at Chelsea District Court, they're not being heard. And we're not talking about delays of days, weeks, or months. Sometimes we're talking about years. That's not fair to the city, and it's not fair to the property owner who has the right to have their issue heard in a reasonable and prompt fashion. So these hearings will occur twice per month. When an owner gets a ticket, they will have 21 days to either pay the fine or to file an appeal. They'll be able to mail it in, or there'll be forms available right in the code enforcement office. The city will not charge anyone to have their grievance heard. They'll have an automatic right to a hearing if they choose to do it. They can come for a hearing in person, or they could submit it in writing, and there's a process for each of those steps. A hearing will be automatically scheduled to be scheduled within 45 days. The way it's set up, most likely, the people will have their hearings within 30 days of requesting it. They will receive a decision in writing by your municipal hearing officer, won't just be told they're being ruled against them in a little two-minute brief. They will get a decision in writing that will explain why they won or why they lost, and what their options are to go forward. If they do lose the hearing, they will be supplied a form by the City of Revere to go and file an appeal to Chelsea District Court if they feel that's the process they want to pursue. They will also be given an opportunity to reschedule the hearing date. Now, this entire process right now was going on manually, which is people trying to provide customer service the best they could in Inspection Services, and it just wasn't working. This will be all done through the city's computer systems and the clerks and the municipal hearing officer that the city selects. This, I have to say, with all the municipalities that I've seen that have adopted 40U, the selection of Attorney Bob Mara, I have to commend the council, I have to commend the mayor, would be an outstanding selection, talking about somebody who is a distinguished legal scholar, who knows the law, a lifelong resident and committed to Revere, to its people and to its community, has experienced over 10 years of actually doing this type of work, being an arbitrator and being a mediator. And for those of us who know Mr. Mara, he has the disposition and the knowledge to go and deal with these issues in a remarkable way. In a lot of other communities, they're using hearing officers that don't have legal expertise, that don't really fully comprehend all of the legal issues that might be presented or might not have the disposition to deal with differing positions that are presented in these hearings. And Mr. Mara has all of those. So I really feel it's very special, and I think your 40U process is in terrific hands with Mr. Mara. Your Director of Finance is going to talk about this in a little bit more detail, but this is one of the distinguishing factors of Revere's process, and this is financial integration. And what this means is that when the tickets are issued under Inspection Services, there's an entire process and a procedural maze that the legislature created about how we go through the process and the hearings. But at the end of the process, if the ticket has not been paid and the process and the procedures have been followed, what this allows the city to do is to put those tickets on the tax bill. And that will make sure that these things are paid. It will hopefully change people's perspectives about if they continue to violate the city ordinances and city public safety rules, because they will see dramatic consequences for that decision. But what will happen is that when the process is completed from Inspection Services, the system will recognize it, it will leave Inspection Services, and then it will show up in the city collector's office. Right now, you have a system where Inspection Services is always involved in the process, and it never leaves their office, even though they're really no longer involved, and it's now a financial matter. And so what the Treasurer and Director of Finance has said is that we need a final process where, once the process ends with Inspection Services, now it's a matter of finance, and it has to be dealt with under municipal finance rules, under municipal finance procedures, and the ticketing process and the hearing process is now completed. So an example that you're seeing in this PowerPoint here is a ticket that's reached the end of the procedural maze and procedural process. What will happen is that it will automatically leave Inspection Services, and it will show up on a municipal lien certificate if somebody refinances, if somebody wants to sell, if a bank wants to foreclose, and then it will also end up going to a property owner's tax bill. And again, that will only happen if somebody does not prevail on an appeal, or they choose not to pay the ticket. This last slide is an example of how the system would work in the case of, say, one of our safe housing examples, where you have a property owner running an illegal rooming house, they're not responding to the city, and they're not doing what they need to do. So number one, a ticket can get issued. It can get issued every single day, if that's what's appropriate and what the inspectors do. The fine could be anywhere from $25 to a maximum of $500 per violation. The owner would have 21 days to pay or request a hearing. Taking a safe housing example where nobody's responding to the city and they're just doing whatever they want to do, there would typically be no response from the owner. They would receive an additional notice letter providing another 30 days to pay, and if they don't respond to that, at that point, they've had the ticket on the door. We've mailed them a courtesy copy of the ticket to the address that they have on record with the city. We would send another courtesy letter with 30 days, and if at that point they still haven't responded, the ticket, no matter what the amount, would automatically be escalated to $500, and it would move over to the Finance side and would become a lien on the property owner tax bill, and it would guarantee that that money has to be paid. And that could happen with the really severe properties as much as every single day. So that is an overview of the process generally, and I'll turn to your Director of Inspection
Hi. Nick Catnazzo, Director of Inspection Services. Just wanted to speak a little, this has been a long time coming. It's taken a long time, but I think we got it down absolutely perfect. It's very frustrating for our inspectors, day after day, to go out and write violations. And people know that if they appeal a ticket, the word gets out there that it's going to go to Chelsea Court and probably never be heard. And it's very frustrating. You all call me every day with violations within your wards. The guys do the best they can, but it's very frustrating for guys to go out there and do their job every day, only to be, you know, somebody, we got six, seven violations sometimes in court where people have appealed. And the courts are just, they're just so crowded right now, they don't want to hear city problems with tickets and stuff like that. So we're on the back burner. At any given time, we probably got, I went over to the court and visited the clerk one day. They probably had a pile of 70 requests for hearings that have never been heard. So we try to knock off a little at a time, but the biggest thing here today is the pass this ordinance is going to help our department immensely with these handhelds. I think this is going to be a model of the future, and I think we're going to be an envy to most municipalities. The attorneys did a fantastic job putting this all together, the language and the verbiage. As I said, to have this hearing officer, this is going to be big. They're going to hear probably 20 cases a month, 10 cases at a time twice a month, and this will give our inspectors much more leverage out there. Because like I said, the word gets out there, they just put an appeal in, and they don't pay the fine. And once the appeal goes in, we have to stop it in the system so it can't go to a late notice. So I couldn't think of a better person to have as a hearings officer than Bob Mara. Not only will he be fair to the city, but he's going to be fair to the person coming in for the hearing, too. And he's going to have evidence, he's going to have pictures, they're going to be downloaded into his computer, they have photos of the violation. Almost every violation we have now will be a picture of it. And we have to bring ourselves into the future. Right now, the system's not working. It doesn't sync, like Peter was talking about, it doesn't sync with the, it's just, there's no flow to it. And you don't realize, you do it every day and you think it's working, but they showed us, basically, it's not working. And we just got to do a better job, and it's very important that you pass this, it really is, because we need this, the city needs that. You see all the violations that are out there, some come summertime, and especially this year, when all that snow melts, people are not taking care of their properties, we've got abandoned cars, we've got illegal apartments, we've got illegal rooming houses, we've got overloaded dumpsters, we've got rodent problems. We need a good tool, and this is the tool we need. This is very important to pass this, it really is. And we can't hesitate because we want to get this up and running. We've been doing training classes, all our guys, all our inspectors are going to be caught up to date. So with that, I just want to say that this is a very important thing for our department. And you know how, you all have been into my department, and you see how we work, and the whole team did a great job. We want to thank Chief Dougherty also for giving us some of the funds to buy some of the handhelds. Without that, we would have been dead in the water, but that was really a key part also. The mayor's been really working hard on this and really pushing us, staying on us to get this through. The attorneys have done a fantastic job. Emily has done a tremendous, Emily Grossman, who's worked a lot with the company there to get this through, and she's done a great job with that. So that said, I won't say anymore, but it's very important that we have this.
Thank you, Nick. Nick, before we leave, I just have one question. I'm sure all the other councilors would adhere to the same question. Right now, you can, if a property is in real bad condition, you can serve them within 24 hours, I believe, after you issue a couple of fines?
Right.
Then we can...
You're talking about a cleanup?
A cleanup. How does that affect that?
That's correct.
That's something I don't want to lose.
No, we're not going to lose that part of it. We're not going to, that part of it will not be lost. Those bad properties that we have to do cleanups, the mayor's, we've put some of the money into a vacant building fund, the mayor's put like $10,000 every year so we could pay out money to keep that process in place. And then we lean out that property, we get our money back eventually with the fines. And these people, banks that ignore us now, they're going to be paying a real high price for ignoring us now, because this process is totally different than the old process.
Thank you, Nick. I see Chief Dougherty and Chief Cafarelli here. Do you have any input you want to put into this, Chief?
Good evening. Chief Cafarelli and I are totally supportive of this. Chief Cafarelli wanted some additional leverage or the power to write some of these citations through his patrol offices, as it is. Right now, the way the law was written and his citation books, these violations were not on there, and would be published in another book and all this. So we're going to be, fire and police are a little behind the Inspection Services on that. Eventually, I think we will have a written book where we will write our citations versus the handheld devices, and then that will be inputted over at IDS, ISD, and put into the system.
Great idea, great idea.
And it's very good. Our inspectors are out there anyways, doing some fines and different things like that. Now we take people to court on a regular basis. But we have match general law behind some of our fines. It's a little better than just a code or a city ordinance where the courts just fluff you off. So it's going to be, it's a great system. The mayor's really pushed hard for it. I'd also say that Dave Krasnov, who's coordinating us and whipped us into line and paid me for money, and we were able to come up with some creative financing that I won't let our financial director know about, but we have some funds that I was able to get under emergency planning and buy these devices. And that's the key, is the device, the photo, the ticket being issued, and then the integration with finance. So it's a great system, and I believe it's the first time this has happened in the Commonwealth where it's actually going from Inspection Services direct to the city financial. So there's no glitches, there's no holdups, and it's going to be a great system.
Sounds good. Chief Cafarelli?
Good evening. Yes, I'd just like to weigh in on this proposal. I'm very much in support of it. Unfortunately, we're just holding a supporting role at this point. We're providing the hearings location. In the police department, we're open 24 hours, obviously, and we'll be able to provide off-hours hearings so people don't have to miss work to come to a hearing. And also, we've been assisting with the Inspection Services with the police officer, keep the peace role, and I'm sure we can anticipate that role to continue during the hearings, and that's why they're at the police department. We are looking for something, it's kind of a living document. We're looking to expand some of the enforcement that we will be able to provide with the ticketing process. We're working on it. There's nothing for the police to really do at this point, but we're in support of it, and hopefully as time progresses, we'll be able to participate in some of this enforcement for all my officers.
Sounds good, Chief. Thank you very much for your input. Are there any other proponents here?
My name is Giorgio Anzoni. I'm the Director of Finance of the City of Revere, Level 141 Fenley Street, Revere, Mass. At this time, I'd like to consider this proponent because of the, one, of the importance of this ordinance, the ordinance change as far as the implementation of 40U and collecting the collection portion of this ticketing. I want to first thank, before I begin, the team I work with. I appreciate all of their input, and it was led by David Krasnov, who was a pain in my neck for two and a half years, but I love you, David, thank you. And then there was Glenda Rose and Nick Catnazzo, Paul Capizzi, and... And then there was Glenda Rose and Nick Katnasso, Paul Capizzi, Emily Grossman, Peter Brown, Cherry D'Ambragio, and the Chief of Police, Joe Cafarelli, and the Chief of the Fire Department, Gene Doherty. And under the direction of Mayor, we all worked together in a unifying manner, and it was a process that I believe is going to be very successful with the City of Revere. This process is important to the City of Revere because of the financial income that it'll provide to the city, not only... Well, important because it'll clean up the housing stock in Revere, but more... And another important area will be the... Which is my favorite area, is the financial area. It will improve the financial area, it'll improve the financial reporting. We will not have receivables out there that are uncollected, that show up on our bills. This law has the teeth in it that we need in order to enforce it. We have this... I think we're the only community in Massachusetts, in the Commonwealth, that I know we're the only one community in the Commonwealth that has an integrated into the financial systems. And what that will do is, right away, it will... At the time, it becomes a lien, it will allow it to go into the collector's side, and then the collector's side will bring it, according to the laws of Massachusetts, into the treasurer's side, and the final collection, either in tax title or in a foreclosure. And it'll go into a very successful auction program. Our auction program, which was started maybe six, seven years ago, with myself and the assistance of Attorney D'Ambragio and Attorney Brown, we have raised for the city over $3 million. Now, that $3 million goes right down to the bottom line, free cash, and it's been very successful, and this has helped the city quite a bit. And because of that, our bond rating is at a high level, God bless you. So, at that, I want to be listed as the... A proponent, a very strong proponent of this, and thank you very much, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Anzoni. Are there any more proponents? Anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Thank you, Mr. President. David Krasnov, 155 Newman Street, Revere, want to be listed as a proponent. For me, in the direction that the mayor provided early on, this is about quality of life. This is about that one house in our neighborhoods that are causing our neighbors and folks to get frustrated, and they feel as though the city is not being responsive. So, this is just another tool that we'll have to help mitigate those problems. So, again, thank you, just want to be listed as a proponent. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Krasnov. Are there any other proponents? Any other proponents? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the...
Michael Zach Araya, 123 Cushman Avenue, Revere, and I'll hold it, Chief of Operations and Action Companies. As a proponent for this, we work in other cities, secure our buildings, board them up in the 40U, Cambridge, Lowell, Lynn, and they have other procedures in place, and it works. Revere, we've been boarding up buildings for 20 years. I have so many files on my desk, we've never been paid for them, Washington Avenue, we did three years ago, we've never been paid. It gives a tool to the city to help get us paid for what has to be done. We don't mind financing the City of Revere, but they can't pay us if they leave the money in the budget. But we go out there, we don't question it when they call, and we do it for all the cities. But this is a great tool, and it would help any company doing it. So, when the police department calls, and three in the morning, they have to secure a building, at least they can make sure the company gets paid.
Thank you very much for your input. Any other proponents? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Councilors, Councilor Gannasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is very, very interesting, based on the fact that my ward, I've been experiencing illegal rooming houses, illegal apartments, and frustrated by the system. Cushman Ave is one of them that's driving me out of my mind, based on the fact that how are we going to gain entries into these properties? Can we legally go in these properties to determine if there are legal units in place?
One of the things that Inspection Services has been doing over the past several months now is they developed a program with Chelsea District Court, that if Inspection Services learns of these issues, corroborates that there are concerns and conditions on a property, they've been sending letters and requests for the properties to be inspected. And that comes from Inspection Services, that comes from the solicitor's office. When they don't respond, the Inspection Services Department has been going to Chelsea District Court, providing all of the evidence from the concerns from the neighborhoods, the attempts that have been made to try and get into the house. And Chelsea District Court has each and every time given Nick's department the permission to go in and inspect the property and identify all of the violations. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that we've done about 10 of them already. What happens is, the whole team goes in, they get the order from the court, they give the owner a courtesy notice to say, hey, we're coming in 24 hours or 48 hours, we're going to be here at this date and time, please let us in. If not, the Health Department goes in with the Building Department, the Fire Department, the Police Department, and they go in and investigate all of the conditions at the property. They list all the things that might be wrong with it, photograph all of it, and then send out an order to correct to that owner, which they have to respond to immediately. And depending on the severity of the findings that are there, then the city has a number of remedies to go and deal with this. And over the past year, I would say you've seen a number of things. The mayor cited to this 357 Washington Avenue project, and that kind of came down the same way, it ended up going to receivership, and somebody was appointed, and went and fixed up the entire property. There was another one just a few weeks ago, of an illegal rooming house that was reported by a neighbor. And that came in, they found a number of people living in unsafe conditions. Nick's office held a Board of Health hearing, people were told they were living in unsafe and unsanitary conditions, they were given opportunity for a hearing, the Board of Health issued an order, and the illegal rooming house was removed, and that property is right now in court. So, there's a number of things going on to deal with these issues, and this 40U ordinance is part of that entire citywide initiative and project. And most importantly, for those really bad properties, that the people are not coming in and doing what needs to be done, not coming in and trying to solve problems, for anybody who comes in and wants to fix the problem, Nick's office is there, the building office is there, they want to see the problem solved. But for the properties that are really terrorizing the neighborhoods, there's all of these remedies available, the city is following all of them, and what 40U will show is that they're going to have to pay for all of the resources they're making the city expend, and all the time on this as well. So, they'll be carrying the burden. But to answer your question, that's the processes that are in place.
My main thought, Peter, is this, from point of complaint, meaning I call Inspection Services, from that point in time, how much time lapses before a decision is finally rendered that can enter the property?
The Health Department has...
Because I have two locations, Cushman Ave and Union Street, that absolutely, the neighborhood is complaining unbelievable about this up. And Nick, you're probably sick and tired of hearing from me, so...
No, not at all. I can explain the process, the present process we use. First, we were going through hitting a wall. So, I came up with a process, basically, where we get a complaint from the Fire Department, Police Department, or a citizen, they'll make a complaint, and the process works this way. We, right now, we're about to change some of these things with the new 40U. But right now, the system works this way, we get a complaint on a property, it comes in, it comes into our office, it's given to me, I give it to an inspector who does a search on the property to see what the legality is of that property. Once the search is completed, he gives it back to me, calling me...
Excuse me, Nick, you mean the search inside the home?
No, a search inside our office to see what the legal status... Is it a single family? Is it a two-family? Is it a three-family? Somebody might be complaining about a two-family, it is a two-family, you know? So, we find out the legality of the person. From there, it passes on to the Chief Building Inspector to review that search. After he confirms that it is a single, or two, or three family, then it comes back to me, and I assign an inspector to it. That inspector will send out a letter, depending on the situation, an illegal rooming house or an illegal apartment, one of the two, there's two different generic letters we have in the computer system, we just send a letter with no fine. If there's no answer within a week, then for three consecutive weeks, we'll send out another letter with a $250 fine. If after a month or five weeks, okay, it takes that long, if nobody answers, then we turn it over to the Solicitor's Office, over to Paul's office. If Paul gets no answer, then we go... We all work together with our Safe Housing Team, that's what we try to do. We'll make a decision at our meeting. Right now, I think we have about 15 on the board, that we do these administrative warrants that Peter was just talking about. Out of the 10 administrative warrants that we've done, including illegal apartments and illegal rooming houses, every single one of them had an illegal apartment or an illegal rooming house in it. So, we're 10 for 10. So, we're right on. We have a good process in place, but it takes time. These things are not... There's so many factors involved.
Well, the experience that I'm sharing with the neighborhood in Cushman Ave, and one particular individual who is mindful of it, because he sees it, he said, in this particular location, he sees mattresses after mattresses going into this home, you're knowing that... How many beds can you put in one area? And he's seeing different cars.
Do you want to say the address of that property?
You're the one I call all the time, 25.
Yeah, but there's no problems.
No problem.
We've been in there, our inspectors have been...
I've been working on this for four years now.
I know, but I just want to tell you, Arthur, I can tell you, that our inspectors have been in there three times and found no legal unit in there. Three times.
Not an illegal unit, I'm talking rooming house, meaning...
No rooming house either. We found no legal... We had three different inspectors there. I mean, I've already dealt with this. I mean, you know, we have nothing that...
I have nothing but the highest regard for you. You say that and...
No, I don't mean that. I mean, I know what you're talking about.
No, I have to convey that message.
There comes a point, there comes a point...
I understand.
... where it's almost harassment on somebody.
I know.
When you keep going, you know, because one reason or another, a neighbor doesn't like somebody. So...
If I may, just with Nick, to clarify, the definition of a rooming house, people assume when it's a rooming house. There's a clear definition under Chapter 148 relative to a rooming house, and it means five or more people of non-kindred spirit. In other words, they're not related, and they share facilities, kitchen, bathroom. So, you have to have more than five people not related to be considered a rooming house that they're individually paying, they have one room that they lock off, and this and that. We, on a regular basis, go in, we have more power to go into a building, we can act on a complaint or a report, and our inspectors can go in where Inspection Services can't. They need permission or court order.
So, on ten's purposes, I get on a home, I can have a six-room home, and I can rent out three rooms?
People love to report it's a rooming house.
I can rent out three rooms in my home, and that meets within the law?
Yeah, you could, yes, you could.
Well, that's what's happened throughout the whole city.
But you can, and they did it years ago.
Well, we're going to maybe revisit that, that's...
You rent rooms out on a regular basis.
I know, and that's what's...
And it's, people just assume it's a rooming house, and under the definition of the law, it is not, and they're like...
And they all bring about six of different armory bales in place, oh my God. Okay. So, we just told everybody what we can do.
You have extended families that are doing the same thing, and we're not doing it. You know, they're going to have 10 people, they could have 10 people in one apartment, three bedrooms, and it could be the mother, father, the grandparents, and they could have three, four, or five kids.
Well, Nick, you know how hard I've been trying to...
A lot of people bring in exchange students, fun, various...
Right, more, bring in more, bring in more.
I know, but this is what we've got to do, is make a difference.
Oh, my word.
We've been doing it on a regular basis with Safe Housing, with David.
Okay.
And on a regular basis, we're going in and inspecting these places. I send our inspector in when we really want to get something.
We... More police, more fire, more trash removal, all this is coming from this one property that's not commercial, that's allowed to use their home for commercial property, and we're saying, within the givens of the law, it's bona fide and okay.
It's considered a commercial property then.
Oh, boy.
I mean, anybody that has a multi-family, you have a two-family, you know, something commercial.
Something's wrong with our laws.
We're not defending it, but that's what the law is.
No, I... That's what I want to know. So, this way here, I'll be able to intelligently relay the message, and after I get shot from telling the person that, I'll come back and tell you that it doesn't work.
The mayor instructed us to go, when he first been in as mayor, was one of the first persons we were after.
No, I understand. But this is a lot of... I'm experiencing that throughout my ward, and it's really alarming for the law-abiding citizens who are there, doing the right thing, keeping their properties up, making sure that their cars are in their driveway, in front of their homes. These people are just coming from all over, and they have no regard for anything. And so, I'm concerned about that.
That's the nature of the business we run now.
But now, we're saying to everybody, it's legal to do it, so we're in trouble. Major trouble. I can't see us making a better place to live with these type of laws in place. It's just not possible.
You know, this is just not a Revere, this is an every...
I understand.
Every single, every town, while I can talk to a lot of people, inspectors in other cities, it's not just in Revere, this is happening everywhere.
Quite alarming.
We are very aggressive with what we do.
Well, that's because the borders have been removed, and now we're getting an infiltration. Now, we're also throwing more children in our school system. We're going to outdo ourselves, that we won't be able to afford to live in a bungalow, because that's the way the laws are...
The one good thing, a lot of these properties that we come into, and maybe they're just borderline with the law, is that we bring them up to date on the codes and the laws. If they're lacking in a proper fire alarm system, emergency lighting, things like that, we violate them right away, and they have to correct those things. So, at least we're making a safe environment. It might be overload in the property, but we're making a safer environment. They can't have individual locks, hamp on each door, you know, they're converting a five-room apartment to five bedrooms.
Well, what I see, they'll sleep on top of each other, they'll put the mattress one on top of, pile them up.
There's a lot of...
I just don't think it's beneficial to our community. But if there's nothing we can do about it, it's...
If they're within the law, then that's it.
Okay.
If not, we do, we refer them to the License Commission, if they don't have a license to run a boarding house.
All right. Thank you very much, I appreciate your input.
Thank you, Councilor Gannasso. Councilor Regal?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to say that this proposal, I think, is a quality-of-life issue, and it will help the quality-of-life issues that a lot of residents have. One question that I do have is about collaboration with the school department. Has there been any conversation? I know the police and fire are obviously helping out, but I know truant officers have a good... They get a good sense, and they have their kind of finger on the pulse of potential area problem, areas or problem properties. Has there been any collaboration with the school department, or, you know, is there a possibility of that?
Counselor, Safe Housing, I think that's a fantastic idea. I could say yes. The superintendent has expressed concerns on a number of properties that are by elementary schools, and property situations have been escalated with Safe Housing Group because of that, but the other suggestion that you have, I think, is an excellent one. And part of what the Safe Housing Task Force is all about is creating a communication infrastructure so that properties are being identified, and the things that can be dealt with are. And that means coming and hearing from your constituents, and hearing from councilors, and the police department, the fire department. The answer is yes.
Okay. And then, in terms of... And George, this may be a question more for you. In terms of revenue, what are we looking for, or what are we looking at in terms of projected increases in revenue?
Well, if you go by what, let's say, some towns, like it's a large sum, what's going to happen in the City of Revere? I really can't estimate that as yet, because I want to see... Let's get some time under our belt in order to see exactly how it's tracking. But in other cities and towns, it's very successful for them, and if we go anywhere near what other cities and towns are doing, it's going to be quite a profitable thing for the City of Revere, or it's not, but I can't give you a figure.
Okay. And in terms of the devices that are going to be used, are they going to be paid for out of what comes in, or...
Well, the devices being used are being paid, I understand, are being financed by the fire chief, and they are being... How many are getting it, five or four?
Five.
Five, five an hour. And if they do need any other devices, they'll be financed out of the proceeds from the 40U project.
And when we talk about financial integration, I'm assuming that in munis, there's going to be an ability to have that information, the ticket information, kind of populate in munis and be able to be tracked?
Well, the system, we use our tax system on that as govern, and it will be tracked on the govern, and prior offenses will also be tracked on govern software. So, it'll be flowing right from the Inspection Services Department right into the Collector's Office, into the assessment records at the time of a lien on the tax bill, and then further on to the Treasurer's Office and the tax pedal, and then hopefully the foreclosure process will take effect.
Thanks, George. And I just want to say that Bobby Mara is a fantastic choice. He did a fantastic job on the licensing board, and I look forward to having him in command of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Regal. I'd like my colleagues to realize, this is going to committee this evening, and if we could keep our remarks as brief as possible so we can get on with the evening. Councilor Reden.
Thank you, Mr. President. On that note, I would certainly delay my comments, in the most part, to the subcommittee meeting, but I would like the, Mr. Brown in particular, perhaps, as I, who I assume is the architect of this ordinance to some extent, be prepared to explain it a little bit further. I have skimmed through it, and I have a couple of issues with it. First of all, let me say, it's a great idea, as all the lawyers in this room are well aware, the judiciary is no longer capable of dealing with municipal fines if it ever was, and the burden on them is just so overwhelming that they just don't care. This is a perfect opportunity for us to take the bull by the horns, which maybe we should have done a long time ago, had it have been available, I certainly would have consulted. Once again, Mr. Mara, I hope he stays in this job for a long time, because he's the perfect guy for it, I couldn't agree with everybody more. He's got great discretion, he's understanding, and he'll, I think he'll do a fantastic job, and I hope he stays on the job a long time. I hope the next person who comes along after him has the same skills that he has, let's hope so. My only concern, and I'll just say this briefly, is I'm worried about the little guy in this. I know we're out to get the big guy, and I understand it, I get it, these institutional people who take over mortgages have ignored us for years and years and years. It's abominable, and they deserve to get hit with everything they can get hit with. I'm a little concerned about the little guy, and I want to make sure that we have safeguards in there, principally through the hearing officer, to, that once these things get to finance, they're not irretrievably a $500 fine, or a $500 tax lien for a $25 fine when the guy was in Florida and his stupid tenant didn't tell him about it. So, that's a big concern of mine. I get going after the big guys, we need to protect the little guys, though, in this process, so if we could address that at the subcommittee, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Reden, Councilor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the 40U is a great first step in Revere. It gives the legal authority to the inspectors to go out there and do their job with teeth in it at this point in time. And again, as Steve mentioned, I'm a little worried about the little guy, the guy that may put a barrel out prior to six o'clock, whatever it may be. But again, I'm in favor of it, without question, and I'm looking to address some other questions I have with Peter Brown. Thank you.
Mr. President, could I just respond to this?
Mr. Mayor.
We've had two speakers in a row talk about the little guy, and believe me, I just, I just want, prior to this going to the subcommittee, we're not, you know, the little guy would have got a fine with or without 40U, and, you know, and that same little guy would have been able to go to court and challenge it. This is a tool for the city. This isn't gonna change the way the city fines people. We're gonna find, you know, big guy, little guy, doesn't matter who, if they're not obeying the laws of the city, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, we're not gonna just arbitrarily say, well, this guy might, he's a little guy, we're not gonna find him, but this guy, he has, he has a little bit more means, so we'll find him. We're not gonna, we don't differentiate that way. When we go out, if somebody is violating one of our city ordinances, and I would hope that you guys would not condone that, we have inspectors that we pay to go out and find them. So, I just want to eliminate any premonition that you might have that we're gonna just arbitrarily go out and start socking away, you know, and we are not gonna differentiate by, by any type of criteria that, you know, you could possibly drum up. We're gonna, we're gonna go out, and our inspectors are gonna go out, and they are gonna uphold city ordinances. That's all they're gonna do.
No, we understand that, Mr. Mayor. As a matter of fact, I deal with Mr. Katnazos several times a week, and he's been very fair, and we are very fair too. We understand, you know, where that problem is. It's not with some little old lady that didn't take her, put a trash barrel out at the right time.
And I'm sure, I'm sure that Bob Mara would be able to address that.
I'm sure he will. Bob is very fair. He'll do an excellent job.
Exactly. So, I just don't want that, because, you know, I mean, there's, you know, I mean, there's definitely the same protections, probably better protection, because we'll be able to hear it locally instead of in court, to help with those people that you're thinking about.
Yeah, I agree. There are problems out there, and we're gonna address them.
Councilor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I think this is a long overdue. As Nick Katnazos knows, as ward councilors, we have to deal with this on a constant base, basis. And the worst thing that can ever happen to a neighborhood is a vacant house or foreclosure. I'm not putting down every, some people unfortunately end up in foreclosure, but some people do it on purpose, some people don't take care of their property, and they get to live there for like three, four years, and let, just let the house deteriorate, and it's the worst thing that can happen to a neighborhood. It brings rodents, it just, it just stresses out, it can stress out a whole neighborhood. So, and I just wanted to bring that point out, that every time that, I'm glad they're giving you more tools to work with, Nick, because when, when we get calls that, you know, with these new devices, at least you'll have the proof in hand. And that, being an ex-police officer, there's nothing like having a picture of something, if somebody says one thing and somebody says another thing, hey, here's the picture. But, I'm also with my colleagues with, again, this is the problem with the little, the taxpayer, that, you know, has to take care of his property. But the vacant house, the banks, they're the ones, you know, I, I am a victim of one of these problems in my house, and I did a little research on the bank that owned the house, and it came back from Texas. He don't care about Revere, Massachusetts, he don't care about, you know, I won't even mention the street, but he don't, he won't, he don't care about that house. He don't care about that $50 fine or whatever. But, when they start, when they start getting hit with the, with the bigger fines and the proof, and, you know, and they, well, they say, well, we got a management that takes care of that property. Well, they don't take care of that property. They're probably getting paid to keep care of that property, but they don't get, they don't take care of it. So, that's, I'm glad you're getting these new devices, and I think it's gonna, it's gonna help the neighborhoods, because I'm tired, you know, you and your staff have been great. Every time I call on a vacant house, it had to be a cleanup, again, it's been taken care of, and I appreciate that. And, but now, you got the devices, you can hear, oh, no, that, we didn't put that trash out, you know, we didn't, so you got a picture. I mean, this is the greatest thing, I think, for you guys, to help you, and nobody's here to make money on it. We want a better quality of life in our neighborhoods, and this is well over, I tell you, I wish we had this five years ago. And good luck, I hope we can push it through quickly for you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Patch. Councilor Novosovski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know this thing is a long time coming. I support it a thousand percent. I know it's gonna beef things up for Inspection Services, but I do have a question to either Nick or someone. Does this include building and health, or just health?
The entire Inspection Services Department. Struggle plumbing, building, and health. It's correct.
Okay. And, you know that I have one particular item that's, that's been in my mind for the last two years, I would say, and I don't mind saying it's 69 Campbell Ave. I know the chief has been involved in it. We brought the guy to court through the fire department, but we haven't done anything through Inspection Services. And that, that gets to me. Here's a guy that has 26 to 29 people living in three rooms, three apartments, and they're calling it a sober house. Now, I feel bad for people that have to come out and do that, but don't build a rooming house in a residential zone, and it doesn't belong there, and we're not doing anything about it. That bothers me.
Well, as you know, those so-called sober houses, there's not really much the city can do, it's, you know, it's state and federal regulation.
Excuse me. This sober house bill was put in, was in the legislature and never got passed. I don't know why we're scared of it.
Well, there's other cities that have tried, I mean, I'm not an attorney, I can't answer you on that, but it's very difficult. As a matter of fact, there's a case law out there that municipality went after one of these, and they got sued and had to pay damages, I think it was $50,000.
But it's not zoned for a rooming house. I don't understand, it's not zoned for a rooming house. It's a rooming house.
The, as you know, it's, I think, maybe I haven't apologized, Paul, he's the city solicitor. It's essentially in suit at the moment. The owner has challenged us because he's trying to do exactly what you asked us to do, and we are being sued on the HUD, on the Housing Urban Development, the federal agency, for discrimination. So, we have to be careful, because these are, alcoholics are deemed disabled, we can't discriminate against them, despite the zoning, there are avenues for which disabled people are allowed certain privileges under the zoning because of their incapacity, and that's what's going on here. This has nothing to do, really, with 40U. This is a sort of a use issue that relates to disabled people.
Well, wouldn't they get fined for having an illegal operation?
They would, sure.
And why don't they?
Because it's not an illegal operation at the moment.
But there's no such thing as a sober house.
There is such a thing as a sober house.
Not in, not in state law?
Understood, but sober house per se is not illegal. The state law doesn't say you can't have a sober house anymore, then there is a statute that would create one. Like people wanting to live together to overcome a particular problem, are not prohibited to do so by any statute or by our ordinances. They are protected class-
Here you have 26 to 29 people living in three apartments.
And that's why the state law-
And I don't know-
...to its credit took them to court for that very reason, and now they retaliated against us in HUD, and that's where we stand at the moment, until that gets resolved. We're not disagreeing with you, we're just operating within the system to do something about-
This guy is getting $185 a week per person, times 26 to 29 people. And what's the city getting out of it, a three-room apartment house?
Again, they're deemed as disabled. We have to be careful with-
So, you're telling me that they're tax-free?
I'm telling you that, there's another house you know, up on, I forgot the address, where there's a group, a group home of disabled people.
That's Bay Cove, I know, we know about that.
This is a very simple situation.
But they came through the process, they came through the process, they came to us.
Because a process exists for that particular purpose, where one, right now, doesn't exist on the books for sober houses. However, they're not prohibited. That's part of the problem. It's in, it's in that gray area.
Well-
And once we get a decision from HUD, we'll be telling, we'll be able to tell you where we can go from there. However, they're not allowed to do, have fire code violations or building code violations. What we're talking about is a group of people living in a house that are unrelated. That's the difference.
Just baffles me. Well, Mr. President, I support the 40U, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Novosovski. Councilor Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't even know if I want to go on at this point, but I've worked with the Beautification Committee in the past, and I've worked, we've worked with Nick, and we have given them, him and the mayor, so many requests, and the process and the time that was involved for him to continuously go to court, it was just ridiculous. I can't tell you how happy I am that Bob Mara's on the board, because I think he's just gonna be very efficient and quick to detail, good to detail. Basically, this integration process is just gonna lessen the burden of appeals, because people who gets tickets, get tickets, basically can just come to City Hall and appeal them. Yeah, I'm all for this, and that's about it.
Thank you, Councilor Morabito. Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will try to be brief. I'm certainly in favor of this, and it's going to my committee, so I won't take up much time. I want to first thank David and the team for putting all the effort into this process. We're almost, we're in the final stretch here, and I'm excited about it. But I'm not excited about the fact that we may make some revenue out of this. That's not what this is about. We all know that's not what this is about. This is about quality of life, this is about bringing these properties up to code, this is about not having neighbors have these horrible properties next to them. This is about a lot of important stuff. Money is the least part of this. The good part about this hearing is that the people who have a legitimate argument and want to be heard, will be heard locally, they won't have to wait years to get into court to resolve their problems. There's a lot of great stuff about this. It's very rare up here that this council is unanimous on something, but tonight, we are again. Everybody's in favor of Robert Mara for the hearing officer, and I, like everybody else, have tremendous respect for him and his ability, and know that he'll do a great job. But like my colleague to my right, we're worried he won't stay long enough. But I can't say enough good about what's, what is about to happen here, and hopefully, if any of my colleagues have any further questions about the process and the minute details about, you know, and we do have to address a lot of these issues, such as sober houses. We all know that falls into this medical, it circumvents our zoning, and the statue escapes me as the number, but we all know that there's a lot of things like that we can do in the future. But for this particular piece, I want to thank everybody for their work, and this is gonna be really good for the city. Thank you, Mr. President, and I know it's going to my committee.
Thank you, Councilor Zambudo. I also think this is a, an excellent step in the right direction. I've worked years ago as a code inspector for the city of Revere, and our tools were very limited at that time. We had some serious problems, but I think even today, the problems are becoming more serious because we've got a, an influx of people coming into our city, the population is increasing, and I like the part of this, we have the fire department, and I know they have easier access to some of these buildings, and that's good, and we have some good people down there that are working. Inspector Manor, for one, is doing an excellent job down there. I support him and his department 100%. I think there'll be a lot of lives not in jeopardy because of this ordinance, because we're going into these buildings, we can, certain buildings, we can put sprinklers in, smokes, carbons, make sure everything is up to date, the egresses, and there are a lot of buildings around the city now where that's not happening, because we just don't know where they are. So, I think this is gonna be an excellent, an excellent ordinance, and this will be going to Joint Committees Legislative Affairs and Public Safety.
Yeah, I'm gonna, do you want, it'll be brief?
(inaudible).
Okay, because we closed that part of the public hearing, but come up, go ahead.
My name is Donna Nugent, 120 Conan Street.
Okay.
I will try to be very brief, because I was here at one point to request that there be a solution to some issues regarding beautification of homes, and people that are at a certain stage of their lifetime that cannot get out and do certain things like hedges that get too high, okay? So, I would like at some point, even if I cannot, to revisit it in a different aspect or a different way, as we know that's how the law works, we can do that. The next thing I'd like to say is that people spoke of a little guy, and I think that's a great point, okay? I'm a proponent of this. I'm a proponent of making sure that we all have nice, clean property. But sometimes, we've all- But sometimes, we've all been witnesses to the little guy getting stepped on because maybe they tipped off somebody in the city. So we just want to make sure that when you take a look at this, we appreciate the fact that photographs are now something that's going to save us from people that just want to pick up the phone and call because they're upset over something somebody said to them. So yes, I'm a proponent of this.
Thank you.
I do have one more thing.
Go ahead.
My request is that if the police chief and the police department are requesting extra material and pamphlets to define what their role in this may be, I'm requesting that the public be exposed to that initially as well. This is no offense to the police department. At this point in time, issues regarding search, seizure, and those type of issues are now being challenged beyond comprehension for reasons that we don't want to discuss here. So I think that it's very important that we know what the police can do and what they can't do. And I do support the idea of photographs. Totally agree with Mr. Patch. Totally 100.
Let me assure you that the police department is very well-versed on procedures that they are allowed to take. Mr. Kat Nazzo has a good group of men down there who are very articulate, taking pictures. And I'm sure Mr. Mara is very fair with regard to whatever comes before him. With that said, this hearing is going to Legislative Affairs and Public Safety jointly. Now...
Calendar item number two, hearing called...
Excuse me. I'd like to take up, because of the time involved here, I'd like to take up the appointment subcommittee report from Counsel Granasso.
Calendar item number four, report of the appointment subcommittee.
Counsel Granasso.
I was a good-spirited person earlier today and I allow the newspaper to take my notes. So I will go from what I have before me. The first order of business, the reappointment of Revere Housing Authority Commissioner, Mr. George Anzoni, for a five-year term expiring on February 12, 2020. And that was voted out favorably by the subcommittee. And the second was the appointment of Lohin Marea, 1123 Revere Beach, Revere, Mass. as a constable. And that we're going to put on hold. This person did not appear. Next is the reappointment of Paul Minsky, 15 Lynn Shore Drive, Lynn, as a constable. And then, all these appointments that I'm going to read to you now to the Council of Elder Affairs. Sylvia Corin, Thelma Smith, Josephine Bacardi, George Shaheen, Morris Morris, Al Terminello, Irma Acetulo, Nicholas Jacoby, Vincent Camerata, and Amadeo Ayako. And also newly appointed to the Council of Elder Affairs is Rose Colonino. If there aren't any objections from the members of the council, I ask that they all be taken at once. Thank you, Mr. President.
That's fine. Call or roll, please.
Shall the City Council confirm the appointments as reported by Counsel Granasso? Counsel Rego?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Janino is absent. Counsel Granasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novosolsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Riordan is absent. Counsel Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Calendar item number three, hearing called is ordered on a proposed loan order in the amount of $1,850,000 from the MWRA under the Local Water System Assistance Program.
Proponents.
My name is George Anzoni. I'm the Director of Finance for the city of Revere. I live at 141 Fenner Street, Revere, Mass. At this time, I'd like to be listed as a proponent for the amount of $1,850,000, which was a interest-free loan from the MWRA. It's a great program to be in. What we'll do is just put a 10-year period, pay off one tenth each year, once the loan is issued from that point. And there will not be any interest costs or any issuance costs. So that's unusual here in this business, but, you know, we are taking advantage of that program. They, I'll have the city engineer, Nick Reistrum, will come up next to tell you exactly what program, excuse me, what projects they're taking up. But what it will do is, it frees us from not having to borrow under section of chapter 44, in which we would have incurred interest and issuance costs. There are a number of areas in the water department, water infrastructure system that needs most desperately to be repaired. And the fund for this will be repaid out of the Water Enterprise Fund. And we have a healthy, not that we're going to use the free cash, but there is a healthy free cash in the water and sewer fund. So, are there any questions? I'll ask those questions.
Any questions, many counselors? Thank you, Mr. Director. Any other proponents? Mr. Reistrum.
Nicholas Reistrum, City Engineer, 53 Genesee Street. I'd like to be listed as a proponent for this. As a lot of you counselors know, there isn't enough, in my opinion, that we could do to improve the infrastructure in the city. That includes what this would do, which would be to improve the water system. What's part of this is water main replacement in certain parts of the city, also hydrant replacement, and then also some efforts to improve some gate valves, which would be used for isolation and repairs. As many of you know, we've had a lot of issues with the water system. I can, you know, give you some numbers as recently, that we've had 33 breaks in the water system just in the last two months alone. And as I had stated earlier, there really isn't enough that we could do to put into infrastructure. And so I'd ask that the council vote tonight and vote favorably to pass this loan order as it's something that really needs to be addressed and that will be increase in public safety and also quality of life. So if there's any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Reistrum. Any counselors have any questions? Mr. Reistrum? No.
Thank you.
Any other proponents?
Don Goodwin, Superintendent of Public Works. At this time, I'd like to be quoted as being in favor of this proposal. As Nick reiterated, that there's not enough money to fix this infrastructure system that we're dealing with right now. When it comes to water and sewer, if you want to grow your community so that it becomes an asset for the business community to come in here, you have to have upgraded water, sewer, infrastructure. So that's why I'm a proponent of this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Any other proponents? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? No opponents, I'll close that side of the hearing. We're going to take this up for a vote this evening.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Shall the City Council approve a loan order in the amount of $1,850,000 from the MWRA under the Local Water Assistance Program? Counsel Rego?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Janino is absent. Counsel Granasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Haas?
Yes.
Counsel Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novosolsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved. In accordance with Rule 23 of the City Council Rules of Order, the following motions or communications are being reported out of various city council committees with a recommendation to be placed on file. Calendar item number five, motion of Counsel Zambudo relative to a Human Resources Department.
Mr. President.
Counsel Zambudo.
At a minimum, I want to leave this in committee because obviously, the need has not gone away. So I'd like to leave this in committee.
Remains in committee.
Thank you.
Calendar item number six, motion presented by Counsel Rego relative to an ordinance establishing a personnel department.
Counsel Rego.
Mr. President, I'd like to keep this in committee also.
Thank you. It remains in committee.
Calendar item number seven, motion of Counsel Penta relative to hiring an architect for renovations to City Hall.
Mr. President.
Counsel Zambudo.
Again, at a minimum, and this needs to stay in committee, I don't know if it's appropriate to take up one of your late motions about the problem we're having here with, that's going to require a lot more than a exterminator to correct.
We'll leave this in committee. That's fine.
Okay. Because we're going to need to appropriate this money. Thank you.
Calendar item number eight, motion of Counsel Rego relative to the FY 15 budget and projections for FY 16 and 17.
Counsel Rego.
Mr. President, I'd like to keep this in committee.
It remains in committee.
Calendar item number nine, motion of Counsel Patch relative to the establishment of a police reserve list.
Counsel Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, this was a motion by myself and actually Counsel Penta brought it. He knew that I had tried in the past to get this done, but I would like to keep it in committee because I feel that it works so well with the fire department that I'd like to see it.
It will remain in committee.
Calendar item number 10, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Vincent Lauria, 362 Vane Street, Revere, Mass. to the Conservation Commission to fill the vacant position created by the resignation of Joseph James.
Point, Ms. Committee.
Calendar item number 11, communication from the mayor relative to various appointments, to various boards and commissions.
Appointments, Committee.
Calendar item number 12, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Caruso Corporation, 320 Chargers Street, Revere, Mass. as a licensed drainlayer.
Appointments, Committee.
Calendar item number 13, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Sakati Construction LLC, 145 Burl Street, Swampscut, Mass. as a licensed drainlayer.
Appointments, Committee.
Calendar item number 14, communication from the mayor requesting a bond authorization in the amount of $2 million for Harry Del Russo Stadium.
Public hearing.
Mr. President.
Counsel Riordan.
If I could ask that at the public hearing, the city planner come before, come before the committee. I understand from reading the letter, the communication, that this $2 million was inadvertently not bonded because of the exclusion of the, or the inclusion of the grant money. And I don't think that was the intention. But I also know that the intention of the bond was to overbond and it appears now that we may be, at least from what I understand, we may be approaching the full measure of the intended bond in the first place. So I think it's probably not a bad opportunity, not a bad time, to take the opportunity to have the city planner explain to us exactly where the costs have gone. I'm not suggesting that it's an overrun or anything like that, but I think we should know.
I think there was, if I'm not mistaken, there was an anticipation that if the casino was to come to the city, we would get $2 million that would be added on to this to bring us up over that $7 million mark. Of course, that's not happened, as we all know, and it's likely that, very likely, it won't happen. So, you know, we're in a project down there now that needs to be completed. We can't leave it like it is. And I think it's a good idea to bring the city planner and perhaps the mayor before the committee to explain why this is, these costs are in there and they weren't given to us in the beginning. With the understanding that, you know, I don't, I didn't understand in the beginning myself that we were waiting for the $2 million from the casino. So I think there's some explaining here to be done and... Yeah, it's going on a public hearing anyway, but...
Public hearing, public hearing?
Yeah.
Once again, I would ask that the city planner be asked to come.
That's fine.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counsel Rego.
In addition to having the city planner come up, I do think that it would be helpful, and maybe this is kind of what Counsel Riordan has alluded to, but getting a detailed schedule of the costs of the project. It seems to me that the project is, I would guess, 50 to 75% completed. I just wonder where the, what the $2 million would represent in terms of costs for the project. And I would hope that we could also hear about what this means in terms of our debt financing and the long-term impact of having this $2 million, $2 million added to our debt schedule. I will say also that I was not under the impression that we were voting on a $5 million bond with the anticipation that there would be $2 million in casino money. That was not made clear and I think that is something that has to be discussed further. But I will say that I think this conversation needs to happen and we need to think about this project and the additional $2 million in the same conversation as a lot of the capital projects that we have going on and, or that need to happen. We have a DPW building that's dilapidated. We have the sewer flies here in City Hall that we're going to talk about a little bit later. We have a new roof that needs to be put on the Pines Fire Station. We have a Garfield School that has a roof that needs to be renovated. And we have a potential new high school that we need to pay for. So I just, I want to kind of hear more about what happened in terms of this $2 million and exactly where this $2 million will be going. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. What I would like to see also is, at that meeting, is a construction schedule similar to the, sort of a progress report, similar to the ones that the school department give us periodically as to what phase of construction, what monies have been expended to date. And that'll give us, I think, a better idea of exactly what's happening.
Mr. President.
Counsel Zambudo.
We're ordering this to a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
And then it's going to go from there to a committee where we're going to get all this information.
All right.
And we can get the Director of Finance and everybody else that we need at this subcommittee.
I understand that.
Thank you.
While the Director of Finance is here tonight, I just want to bring that out.
Great. Thank you.
He understands. Thank you very much. Order to a public hearing.
Calendar item number 15, communication from the mayor requesting a transfer from the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund in the amount of $50,000 to repair the city's back to truck.
Fine. Mr. President?
We'll wait for Donnie.
Don Goodwin, Superintendent of Public Works. I'm here before you tonight because we had a breakdown of the back to truck during the inclement weather of the past month. There's a circulator pump that circulates the water through the water system in this $250,000 piece of equipment that we utilize for excavation, sewer work, and it does all our sewer blocks. Presently, we are using subcontractors to do our sewer blocks. It's getting quite expensive. Don't have the money presently in any of my accounts to fix this work, to fix this vehicle. The $50,000 seems like a lot of money, but it's a $250,000 piece of equipment. And we will get another 10 years' worth of service out of this vehicle. So it's either buy another $250,000 piece of equipment, which I don't think is necessary at this time. The truck is in really good condition. The engine's in good shape. Everything else is in good shape. The manifolds, the pumping system and the hoses and one of the tanks needs to be replaced. So that's why I'm before you this evening.
Mr. President? Questions from counselors? Counsel... Counsel Novoselsky.
Hey, Mr. Superintendent, just one question. Do we know how much we've put into the truck so far?
It's a very expensive piece of equipment to maintain. I would say on average, it'd probably take $7,000 or $8,000 a year just to maintain the truck itself. And occasionally, every four or five years, we do upgrading on the internals of the system, but it can run between $12,000 and $18,000.
We've put in maybe $100,000 into it so far. Approximately, give or take.
With this $50,000, yes.
With this $50,000, that's $10 per year.
Yeah. Well, the first four or five years, obviously, we didn't put nothing into it. Everything was under warranty.
So it'll still be less than 50% repair cost, maintenance repairs to it? Thank you.
Thank you, Governor Novoselsky. Counsel Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just obviously, the reason for the enterprise fund is for this very reason. So I think it's a no-brainer, we just vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Zambudo. Counsel Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Donnie, in terms of the damage that was done, is it directly related to the weather events that we had? Are we going to try and get any reimbursement from FEMA or MEMA in terms of, I'm assuming that the city has a list of costs that have incurred due to the storm and that there may be an opportunity to have some reimbursement based on what happened and what equipment was damaged?
We can add to that and see that that would be part of...
Okay. And the other question is...
But if you don't ask, you won't receive.
Right, right. And the other idea would be if it isn't reimbursable, then maybe insurance could cover. I know insurance can cover some parts of vehicles that may be, may have been damaged due to, due to the weather events of the last couple of months. And I think that would be something to pursue. Hopefully, we can be reimbursed.
We're going to take this up for a vote this evening, but I just have one question I'd like to ask, Donnie. Donnie, Counsel Rigo brings up a good point about reimbursement from MEMA or FEMA. As you probably know, there's been a lot of damage to guardrails, those pressure-treated guardrails on Rice and Mills Avenue. And just maybe we could get some money, so...
We put in for guardrails, manhole covers.
Okay.
Infrastructure structure.
Hydrants, okay.
It didn't seem that that's what they were looking for and asking for, but we put it in there anyway, Counsel.
Okay, very good. Thank you a lot. Any other questions, any councilors on this? Move the question and roll call.
Shall the City Council approve a transfer from the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund Free Cash to the Water and Sewer Enterprise Sewer Maintenance of Equipment Fund in the Amounts of $50,000? Counsel Rigo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Genino is absent. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas? Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved.
At this time, I'd like to thank the Council for their prompt attention to this problem that we have. Thank you.
Now, Madam Clerk, on Item 16, I'd like to include all of the councilors on that motion. I think our sentiments are similar.
Calendar Item Number 16, Motion Presented by the Revere City Council That the Following Special Legislation Be Immediately Forwarded to the State Delegation for Approval. An Act Authorizing the City of Revere to Pay A Certain Sum of Money to Cynthia A. Penta.
Yeah, roll call. Any, any councilors have any question? No.
Shall the City Council Approve An Act Authorizing the City of Revere to Pay A Certain Sum of Money to Cynthia A. Penta? Counselor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Genino is absent. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas? Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and City Council President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the special legislation has been approved.
The late?
The late motion presented by Counselor Powers That the Mayor Direct the Superintendent of Buildings, aka the Superintendent of Public Works, to have an exterminator correct the problem with regard to sewer flies in City Hall.
Yes, I, this morning in City Hall, I spoke with several of the secretaries and employees, other employees, and even in the mayor's office. And there is a problem with some type of, whether they call it a sewer fly or a molding fly, or whatever you want to call it. It creates a health situation for the employees and it needs to be corrected as quickly as possible. I understand that in the Community Development Office, not that I understand, I saw it for myself, that there's water leaking through the ceiling in there. And the tornado was last July, I guess it was. So, you know, this is something that needs to be corrected as quickly as possible. And I would ask that the mayor direct the superintendent to set up a meeting and get the appropriate experienced individuals in here that can correct this problem as soon as possible. On the motion, on the favor? Counsel, Counselor?
I'd like to expand on it if you might.
Certainly, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate the fact that you put the motion in, but it's a little more serious than an exterminator. It's going to require detailed plans, drawings, to tear down the ceiling, to remediate the mold. This is a serious construction problem and it's a very serious health issue and it's affecting everybody in City Hall. It's something that has to be done immediately and we have to understand that this is not going to be a cheap fix. So I just want to put that out there. This is going to cost some money, it's going to be a capital expenditure. Some of it may be covered by insurance, I don't know that. But the health and safety of the employees in City Hall are at risk and it's something that has to be done on an emergency basis. And I would, if you don't mind, imagine your motion to reflect that. Thank you.
I agree 100%. I would hope, and I've been told, that we have insurance on eight city buildings and there's a $1,000,000 deductible. I'm not sure if that's correct, but this is what I've been told. And if that's the case, I can't possibly understand why the, our insurance wouldn't cover this and we get this thing going as quickly as possible. I mean, we're, what, eight, nine months away now and it's, the problem still exists. I know the mayor was complaining this morning about a door that couldn't be opened because they were afraid of snow falling down off the roof. So I think it's a, it's a serious problem. And we look at it right here in the council chamber, you can see the damage from the water up on the ceiling there and pieces of plastic getting ready to fall. So I think this is something that should be addressed as quickly as possible. And I would ask that the Council support this motion. Mr. President? Counselor Haas?
I think the major problem here is the auditorium with the mold. I think that affects all of us, including the people who work daily.
It does, Counsel, but if you look over here...
I understand that.
And if you, and if you look up in Community Development, it's the, maybe the entire roof has to be replaced, I don't know.
I think you have to address the fly issue in the mold.
Yeah.
Without question. You know, asbestos, you know. I mean, it's a serious problem in City Hall. You've got people who work here all day long.
Exactly. And that's why I put the motion in.
And if I might, again, you can't address it without taking these ceilings down. That's, that's the start of it. We may have to authorize enough money to demolish the ceilings, get to the root of the problem, then draw up specifications to bring mold remediators in here and do it properly. But it's, there's a process and it starts with ripping out these ceilings.
I know that.
I think we've got to do that right away.
I don't, I don't see any problem with doing that, but I think we should also get the people in here and give us the answers as to what type of funds are available through either grants, insurance money, et cetera, et cetera.
I agree, but this is a health issue.
Counsel Riordan.
I mean, really, we're speculating here on what the problem, you know what the problem is? We're speculating on what the remediation is. If we're going to do anything, I think we ought to get somebody up here, a city engineer, or someone to come in and says, what's it's going to take? And then someone from finance coming in, do we have the insurance funds to take care of it? That's, we know what the problem is. We're speculating as to what the fix is. An exterminator, if that's all it takes, an exterminator would be great. Counsel Zambudo's suggesting that it's something more than exterminator. I think we really need to get, we need to get somebody of authority engineering-wise to tell us what the situation is.
I agree. Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll be brief. I think we already, exterminator is not the problem because they already had the exterminator at least once, I think twice in here. And so the problem is probably more, going to be more expensive. Thank you.
Well, just let me say this. We have a city engineer downstairs and we have a fellow that's very well-versed in construction, Mr. Shimara. And I think that between the both of them, they could at least give us an indication of where we need to go on this. Thank you. Mr. President? Counselor Haas?
I agree with you 100%, but I think we have to address the mold problem.
I agree.
All right? We have to have someone up here at the next regular meeting to bring the City Council and the citizens up to date as far as this horrendous issue...
Yeah, add that amendment to the motion. All right. Any other lates? I guess we have one, one more late?
Late motion presented by Counselor Haas That a Certificate of Commendation be awarded to Jacqueline Sheridan of Oak Island for facilitating the rescue of her father and two dogs from the frozen Pines River by calling 911 back on February 19.
Counselor Haas? Mr. President? On the motion, on the favor? Okay, honor. No further business. We will adjourn until the 16th of March at 6:00 PM.